Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus, this meeting of the Town of Berlin Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technical technological means. The Town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage. The town's YouTube channel, approved minutes, will be posted to my town government. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways with both audio and video access or I telephone audio only. Zoom meetings provide remote meeting capabilities for meeting participants, audience members alike. Do I usually read this? I don't think so. Should any board member have any technical difficulties and/or lose access to the meeting? The meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to assure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that can help generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself. Public comment portion of the agenda, to the extent that our technical capabilities allow, public comment will be permitted during the public comment portion of this meeting as follows. Attendees' phones and other devices will be muted unless and until they raise their hand and are recognized by me to speak. If you don't know how to raise your virtual hand, you are attending by video, you could raise your actual hand. I will do my best to call on attendees if appropriate. I will ask each member of the public who wishes to speak to identify themselves and will afford each speaker time to ask a question or make a brief comment. For appointments, those who have appointments with the board under a specific agenda item such as department heads, monthly reports posted joint meetings with other public officials or other public bodies, they will be promoted from attendee to panelist only for that particular agenda item and then moved back to attendee if they wish to stay for the rest of the meeting. We're going to call the meeting to order. It's 7:08. Meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both Berlin Cable Television and YouTube. Your voice, image, and/or telephone number may be recorded. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for May 26th. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
And seconded.
Okay. We'll take a vote then. Keith, I.
First, I.
Stone, I.
Okay, motion passes. Then now we have correspondence, a letter of appreciation to Ruth Wheeler upon retirement from the Council on Aging. You both read the letter. Lisa?
Yes.
You read the letter?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the same letter everybody gets.
I know, I know. Do you have a, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second?
You do, sad to see her go, but seconded.
Okay, then we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
First, I.
Stone, I.
Now, Margaret, I know I had seen a letter of resignation from Bob McTagg from the Historical Committee.
Actually, he was just appointed to the Historical Commission.
He hasn't even attended a meeting, has he?
Yeah, he's, he's brand new. So it's, it's a, yeah, so the board just appointed him.
Okay, I just didn't know whether we needed to accept his resignation.
There is, there isn't one.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to general public comment. And I was gonna read the Zoom raise your hand function for those who may not know how to do this. The host must enable the nonverbal feedback to allow meeting attendees to raise their hands using any of the following devices. The host can lower the hands of any meeting participants. Participants can lower only their own hands. For PCs and Macs, click on Participants button at the bottom of the screen and select the Raise Hand option. To lower the hand, click on the Participants button again and select the Lower Hand option. For Android and iPhone using mobile version of Zoom app, while in the meeting, click the More button at the bottom right corner of the screen and select the Raise Hand option. To lower the hand, click on More button again and select Lower Hand option. For a phone call or landline, while in the meeting on a phone, dial *9 on the, on the phone's dial pad to raise your hand. To lower your hand, dial *9 again. If a video participant cannot see the raise hand icon, then you would, for PCs, with the Zoom not in full screen, click Participants in the toolbar at the bottom of the screen and select Raise Hand. For PCs in full screen mode, move the mouse on Zoom meeting screen to reveal the toolbar. Click Participants tab, Tag and Tab and raise their hand. Mobile devices, tap the screen of the Zoom meeting to reveal the toolbar. Tap Participants, select Raise Hand. Okay. Is there any general public comment? Oh, come on, after all that? Just kidding.
Raise your hand.
That's all right. Okay. Then we'll move on to hearings, appointments, and presentations. We have a Highway Facilities Superintendent report this evening. Hi, Dave.
He's muted.
Can he unmute himself?
I've been unmuted, unfortunately.
Okay. What have you got for us?
So Margaret was questioning whether or not we went over April's monthly report, and we did that combined with March, if you recall.
Okay.
I don't know if you wanted, I don't have it in print form, but I have it on my phone if there were any questions that anybody has in regards to that.
Well, Peg or Lisa have any questions, then they can ask.
Okay, so we'll just move on to our May monthly report. Once again, trees are the biggest problem we're facing now still. I get another call today on another tree. It's, it's two or three calls a week is what, on average, we're getting for tree complaints. I have talked to Margaret in June, and we do have, we're gonna use a little bit extra money, not extra money, money that we were gonna allocate for something else and get the tree company back in here for another three or four days to take care of some of these hazard trees. We're still on split shifts, the guys are working seven days still. Two guys, Jimmy and Brian, are on three days at 13 and, two 13-hour days and one 14-hour day, and Tom and Fred are on four 10s, working Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. It's, it's getting old. But we're doing it, it's working, everybody's, you know, everything's getting done, so it creates a little scheduling problems if somebody's not there for a day, but we work around it. The salt shed's been restocked finally, I haven't got invoiced on that yet, but we purchased 340 ton, I believe was the number. Just about filled the shed, so we're in good shape for next year, going into next winter. We're still doing our roadside mowing, sweeping and patching. Fred painted all the crosswalks and stop lines in the entire town. He took just about a week to do that, he did a real nice job, appreciate that. Aiden's been doing most of the mowing on the fields. We did, we were able to secure $3,100 for the continuing education program that actually placed Odin in our care and custody, I mean Aiden in our care and custody, so we'll be able to keep him through the entire month of June. It's a reimbursable grant, so we'll have to put the money up front, but we'll get it back, just like the other payments that the, this organization did for us, so that was some good news. We finally repaired the lights behind the municipal building. The wiring had been caught, it looks probably from snow plowing, the wires weren't buried that deep in over the years of erosion and plowing. It, it made the conduit exposed and, and one of us hit it with the plow and ripped the wires out, so we fixed that. We did the trench for the electrical, the community garden, the electric trench, so now the community garden has power. We brought them some woodchips for their walkways and chipping up some brush at North Cemetery, restocked gravel bins, little bit of truck and mower maintenance, now that the mowers are out there working full time, they're, they're in need of some attention constantly. We got a little bit of a problem with the AC unit at the municipal building, one of the compressors that the AC is run on, it has two compressors, currently it's only running on one, one has failed on a real hot day, it's probably not gonna keep up. So they're working on getting a price on repairing what we have to see if we can get a few more years out of it and also a price on replacing the units. When I get those numbers, I'll forward them to the board. Other than that, we're going at it, everybody's working, we're getting it done, and thankfully we have some good weather now.
Any questions for Dave? Peg?
So Dave, I don't know if it's a you question or if it's a cemetery question, I figured while you were here tonight, I would ask. One of the residents in town asked who is responsible for trimming back some of the dead trees at the cemetery on Pleasant Street, and I told her I didn't know but would ask. Is that you or is that cemetery?
So I would guess it would start with the cemetery, but if they asked us to do something there, we would be more than happy to do it.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, Margaret?
Thank you. Through the chair, I would just like to thank Dave for all the work he's put in coordinating some of the retrofits to the doors in our building to assure social distancing when we reopen, so when you come to the building next, you'll see that a lot of doors have been retrofitted with counters at the door with little windows so that people can actually stay outside of offices, so it's, it's very, they've done a great job, and, and I thank Dave for coordinating all of that.
Thank you, Dave.
You'll also notice if you, if you look in Mary's office, there's a pile of funny-looking bubble wraps. Those are shield sneeze guards, I don't know what you wanna call them, they're gonna go on the desks where we're not able to restrict public access into an office, say for like the assessors office, the building department. We have some made up for the library. I think that was all in Town Hall in the library, so those will be over the next week or so, we'll get those in place to get ready for when Governor Baker finally opens us up. Showing us one of those windows now.
Oh, I thought you were just taking a walk.
No, there's a window that goes up and down, there's a shelf on either side, so documents can be actually filled out on the shelf.
Oh, Mary's showing it, look, that's it. Yeah, they're really, they're really very nice.
Wow.
Dennis's own, Dennis, Dennis's own office has, now has an actual window in the door, his, if you recall, was a solid door, he now has a window with a counter like that at his, at his door too, so they're doing a great job, great.
Nice. Got time to refinish a table, Dave?
Bring it on down. I'm sitting here on my picnic table, peeling the, peeling the pieces off, I should be finishing this one, but.
Well, thanks, thanks for all you're doing and you guys too.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions for Dave? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening.
Thanks, too.
We are a few minutes early, shall we proceed with our interview? Margaret?
Yes.
All right.
Sounds like a great idea.
Then we're going to invite Victoria.
Hi.
To the table. Hi, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you tonight?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
We have a few questions for you this evening.
Sure.
Okay. I guess I will start. Considering your education and experience, what do you think your strengths are for the Council on Aging Director position? And the second part of the question will be what would, what would be your weakness or something you might have to learn or work on for the position?
I believe that my biggest strength would be just working together as a team. I think that there's something that is really desperately needed for any type of managerial type position, is getting to know your team, getting to know what each person can bring to the team, and being able to get a good understanding of what it is that's actually being done, what's working, what's not. I think in terms of what I would need to know is probably the software, I know that was mentioned at last meeting, and just also getting used to, you know, getting to know all of the other board members as well, all of the other selectmen, getting to know the community and getting to know really what it is that's prioritized for needs and making sure that we do what we can for that.
Okay. Do you feel like you have a weakness or something you might have to learn or work on?
I think, I think everything just takes time, and I think that, you know, going into this type of position, it'd be something new that I've never done before, but I do believe that it's something that with time, I would learn how to do whatever that's needed to be done, so I think the weakness is just really just the getting your feet wet and getting used to everything and getting that knowledge and skill sets.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So my, my second question is, the board and the Council on Aging are hoping to fill this position with someone who is passionate about the job and will have some longevity with the Town of Berlin. Is, do you think that person is you?
I am looking for a job where I can really kind of sink my teeth into and really try to help to make a change for the good, and I think that my experience working with elders, they've become a very endeared population to me. I think that, you know, unfortunately, in, in times such as these, that, you know, a lot of people don't feel like they have a voice, and that's, that's definitely something that I wanted in a job was where I can help to bring a voice to those who may not feel like they have it, so I, I'm really looking for something where I can really kind of sink my teeth into and to grow and to, you know, really kind of grow prosper and really just see what, what good I can do and what, you know, what different directions this will go into.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Lisa, you have some questions?
Yep. The COA Director works somewhat independently and can be pulled in many directions as the liaison between seniors, the volunteer COA, and town staff. Please describe your experience working with minimal supervision and how you would balance sometimes conflicting input.
I think that's a good question. I am a trained social worker, so my job now is I do social work, and, and a lot of times with the field, you never know really what you're gonna get. Every day you think you could have something planned and it could go very awry in about 20 minutes, so I think part of what you need to do, especially with my job now, is that we have to be able to work by ourselves, you know, have a good idea of what it is that needs to be done, but also know that if something comes up, a crisis or something like that, that that may need to get your attention. I think working as part of a team is important, but I also think too that if situations present themselves, that you have to be able to just be able to make a decision and kind of go back to your team afterwards and saying, listen, here is what I'm seeing, here's what I think needs to be done, bring it to everybody kind of as a whole after the, you know, after the point, and kind of moving forward in that sense. So I think, you know, while it is important to, you know, have good camaraderie and kind of know exactly what is needed to be done, I think you do need to be able to have the strong skill set to, you know, be able to make a decision, be able to stand by it, be able to provide logic to say, you know, this is what I think is best, here is my reasoning as to why, and, you know, kind of being able to work with everybody to, you know, do whatever is best for, you know, the seniors of the Town of Berlin. Thank you.
This is a part-time position that requires many different hats, working effectively with volunteers, writing newsletters, managing the van program, providing help and resources, and organizing events, to name a few. Please describe some specific skills you would bring to address this wide variety of needs and what your initial priorities might be.
In terms of being, you know, juggling the different hats, I think each different hat is gonna require its own set of skills, which is something, again, that you would need to kind of learn as, you know, once you get the feet wet. I think something that's really important is just being able to be organized, being able to multitask, because some tasks may be overlapping and some tasks may be independent of one another, so I really strive to be organized, I really strive to make sure that I get my ducks in a row, make sure that I take, you know, the notes needed so I can be able to address whomever needed to at a possible time. I think, you know, being able to do the different things is also really good because you can also expose yourself to different areas within the town, like the newsletter, working with the volunteers, working with the vans, things like that, that's really important too, because they're gonna get perspectives of, you know, the Town of Berlin and from the seniors that I may not have, and I think being able to work with everybody in that sense, you know, while still doing whatever is needed to help out is gonna be really important.
Although seniors do have consistently lower rates of technology adoption than the general public, this group is more digitally connected than ever. Please talk about your computer skills and share any thoughts on how you could potentially broaden the reach of the COA using technology.
I think unfortunately with COVID, we've had to really kind of ramp up any technological skills, you know, that I don't think anybody really saw this one coming, so in terms of technology, I mean, I have, I use a computer, I use my smartphone, I use tablets pretty frequently. I am currently working in a nursing home, and a lot of our seniors are now connecting with their families through either smartphones or tablets, and we use a variety of different meeting applications such as Zoom, Skype, FaceTime, things like that. So I think the great thing about technology is that, you know, it can, it can bring people together, and I think especially now with COVID, because we are all so socially distanced, I really do think that that needs to be a priority is to making sure that people are connected and feel like that even though they can't physically be together, that there are ways to still have a connection. In terms of technology, I think the Zoom meetings, like for the board meeting here, is a great tool that can be used. I think, you know, the local access channel that you guys have, your YouTube channel, those are wonderful resources for anybody to be able to use, and I think being able to use some social media just to even get like short announcements out there, just to kind of get additional attention may be a good, maybe a good resource as well, again, just to try to broaden and to get, to get the, generate some publicity and get some, you know, feedback from anybody and everybody who we can. I think, you know, even having some local businesses, once they start to get up and running again, getting involved, again, with the, you know, with the Board of Selectmen and the Council on Aging as well, can really kind of hopefully help to bridge some of the gap, but I think, you know, technology can be a tool, but I think, you know, making sure that, you know, we still have some grounded roots in, you know, making sure that telephone calls could be done, you know, potentially like a letter writing campaign, something where, you know, for those who necessarily aren't technologically savvy, we can still find a way to try to connect and to try to help meet their needs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Peg, do you have some questions for Victoria?
I do, Victoria, hi, how are you? I'm Peg.
Hi, Peg, nice to meet you.
You as well. Forgive me looking down all the time when I talk to you, but ask anybody on the board, I'm like now filling out my notebook here, so.
It's fine, no worries.
All right. So some of the folks in town, their lifelong, we call them townies, that are here, and there's generations that came before them and there are generations that will come after them, and being a small town, you want to try and preserve that knowledge of, you know, great, great grandma who was instrumental in bringing in X, Y, Z. How do you, how would you do that? How would you get the seniors to potentially share, you know, the history of the town or the changes that, that have come forth as long as they have been in town so that they can share their knowledge, so new folks coming into town, kids growing up in town, can share in that experience and really find out what living in Berlin was like and is like?
I think that's an excellent question. I think that a lot of small cities and towns, I think, would probably be facing similar kind of questions, you know, with Berlin being so small especially, you know, there's, there's a lot of history that has happened, but, you know, not necessarily a ton of documentation for it, so I think what we could do is really try to reach out to those families who have had multi-generations within the town, really just try to, you know, really just try to get close to them and to just say, listen, you know, we want to hear, you know, what was it like for your, your, your family, your grandparents going back, you know, are you willing to share some photos with us, some stories? Is there anything that you're willing to let us, you know, post online or post in a way that, you know, we can share it with other people? Because I think, you know, that's a way that, you know, Berlin's gonna continue to stick out, is being able to kind of see Berlin through many different eyes and through many different lenses, and to see, you know, how has Berlin really evolved from, you know, 200 years ago to now, and what changes do we think could happen in Berlin, so I, I would suggest, you know, trying to reach out to this family specifically, you know, whether it be by, you know, mail, telephone, and just trying to see like what is it that they're willing to share with us, and hopefully, you know, being able to work with them and building a rapport with them so that we can continue to, you know, get that information in the future as well, because, you know, like everything else, Berlin will continue to evolve.
See, this book that, that I was searching for while you were talking, it's called History of Berlin Mass, gone, I think it goes out through the 50s, maybe early 60s, and then it stops, so.
Okay.
So we have a, we have a ton of catching up that needs to be done. So my second question, what types of activities do you see yourself organizing or have organized for seniors in the past that have gone extremely well or that have potentially gone up in flames? And for those that have gone up in flames, what have you learned?
I haven't done a ton of organizing as of yet for activities, but I have, what I have learned though is that it's, it's hard to please everybody, so I think that the important thing is just really trying to have a bunch of different options for people as much as we can, and again, with, you know, with the situation being what it is, you know, this may be an additional challenge to that. I think with, with, again, with connecting with seniors, this can be done in a different way, a bunch of different ways, you know, having, having these, these meetings, things like that on the, on the YouTube channel and on the local broadcasting site is one way to do it. I think even just having little, like leaflets or just having like little dealings that go out just saying like, here's what we're doing, here's what we're thinking of doing, you know, do you have any suggestions, do you have any questions, just again, trying to garner any kind of, any kind of feedback. I think you've been having something as simple as maybe like a phone tree or something where, you know, we reach out to all of the seniors, like, or with a letter just saying like, hey, we know this is a difficult time, we want you to know that you're here, you're not forgotten, and we wanted just to reach out and just let us know if you need anything. I think that your website can be a really good resource as well to help making sure that, you know, posting any type of activities, being sure that people can contact us and just being able to drop us a question if so needed, along with email as well. I think, you know, for right now, a lot of the activities that may be planned may be virtual for the, you know, foreseeable future unfortunately, just again, because of the current circumstances, so I think even having something where it could be even like educational or informational about, you know, it could be something like, how do you make a mask at home for, you know, less than $5 in less than 20 minutes, or it could be something where, again, you know, you maybe have like a virtual information session about Medicare or Medicaid, or it could be something along the lines of, okay, now it's summer, let's, you know, let's talk about, you know, potential, potential factors as well, such as like heat stroke or something like that, where, again, just trying to bridge to all the masses, I think is important, you know, and even doing some fun stuff too, where it could be, you know, that we're gonna have, you know, like a virtual picnic or a virtual like Fourth of July celebration or something like that, where again, you know, people can still try to celebrate while, while still maintaining their safety, so I think, you know, going with what has ever been done in the past successfully, I think is a good jumping point, but I also think too, really just getting, getting opinions and. But I also think too, really just getting, getting opinions and just trying to get feedback is going to be really important because what I may think is a good idea and what you may think is a good idea could be, you know, very far off.
And last question for you. So in the event of another pandemic or a natural disaster, you know, lizards or man-made issues, or something similar to water pipes bursting in an over 55 community, because that never happens. Who knows? What would be your emergency disaster plan or how would you develop one to ensure that, and you touched on it a little bit, that seniors are okay, that they're accounted for? And, you know, what type of help do they need and what can we give them?
I think making sure that we have a strong line of communication for all families, I think is going to be really important. And for seniors, this may be, I think it'd be something that would need to be done pretty early on. So making sure that we have the correct addresses, correct phone numbers, if they have email addresses, get those. If they have a preferred contact method, making sure that we have that all in place. Again, whether it's a phone call, a text message, an email, whatever. And then making sure that in case there is another type of disaster, because again, you never know what's going to happen, making sure that we can send out frequent messages and making sure that people know that whatever, whatever comes up, that they can, they can call us, they can email us, they can reach us, so that way they can address whatever issues come up. Again, we don't know what the next disaster is going to be and it may come, you know, in two months, it could come in two years, you don't know. And unfortunately, again, with current circumstances being what it is, a lot of the face-to-face interactions or a lot of the interactions that may be done to kind of confirm things quicker may need to, are not obviously readily available at this moment in time. So I think just making sure that we have, you know, updated information for all of the residents that we can, even emergency contact information for families, you know, just making sure, you know, again, encouraging people and to, you know, keep a lookout for their neighbors, keep a lookout for themselves, you know, please call, let us know if they, if there's anything that they feel is, you know, doesn't feel 100% right, because, you know, it could be nothing or it could be something and we would want to address that. I think making sure too that we provide as much up-to-date information as we can, as, you know, as resources being updated as frequently as possible and having these resources readily available on the website and as updated as frequently as we can will help, again, to make sure that in case that something does happen, that, you know, there's a next step that can be done. Or if we, you know, even if it's a, you know, few resources, few resources, or it could be resources that, you know, again, go with local communities as well, just saying, you know, as a region, here are some of the resources as well. So I think just kind of making sure that we have all of the, all of the contact information for seniors, making sure that we can help to keep them safe, making sure that, you know, if they have any problems, just please let us know as best as they can. And then making sure that they have all the resources available, I think is important because, again, you don't know what disaster is going to come, but just making sure that we have a line of contact is the best way to do it. And again, hopefully, hopefully it's not going to be needed, but again, planning like it could be needed is, I think, going to be the best step to take.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Chris, I think it's back to you.
Yeah, I have one more question. Victoria, do you want us to call you Victoria?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you went by Vicky or.
Victoria, Vicky, hey you, it all works.
Gotcha. All right, so my, my last question is, tell us why you want to work in Berlin as our Council on Aging Director?
I think that elders are a wonderful population as a whole. I think that unfortunately, like many people, they're just, they're not heard. And that just, it makes me upset to hear that because there's, there's a lot of knowledge and there's a lot of insight that unfortunately sometimes gets thrown under the rug because, oh, you're a certain age now, I don't know why you're trying to talk to me about this. And unfortunately, I, unfortunately, I don't know how much, you know, hopefully that this will change, but, you know, in the short term, I'm not sure how much it would be. So I think when I, when I came across this position, I thought it would be interesting to be the director just because the Council on Aging can do a lot of good. And unfortunately, a lot of people don't know about the good that Council on Aging can do because I think it's a kind of like a hidden resource that if it's, it may not always be marketed or it may not always be advertised in a way that it's readily accessible to everybody. So, you know, sometimes people will be like, well, what's a Council on Aging? What does it do? Does it just, you know, a lot of times like in, from like my experience, people are like, oh yeah, that's that Meals on Wheels thing. And it's like, yep, okay, that's part of it, but it could do more. You can, you can get more out of this. And a lot of people just don't know about it. So I think one of the best things about being, you know, the Berlin's Council on Aging Director is really making sure that the seniors are aware of what it is that a Council on Aging can bring to them. And the good thing is too, is that a Council on Aging can really be melded, it's malleable to an extent where if there is a need that's out there, you know, we can work with the local seniors and say, okay, you know, here's what we think needs to be done, but we want your feedback as well. What is it, what are we missing? What are we not touching upon? And keeping kind of that open mind going forward, I think is going to be extremely crucial because, again, you know, it's 2020, we've had a rough year as a whole. And I think that making sure that, you know, 2021 is a better year. I, I think having a Council on Aging that's involved, is engaging and can provide a lot to its seniors is extremely important. So that's why I thought that this position was just, you know, a wonderful opportunity.
Okay. Victoria, do you have any questions for us? Can you think of anything?
I guess what, what do you guys perceive being the biggest hurdles going forward? I know, you know, with a lot of cities and towns that unfortunately budgets have been, have had to be, you know, inundated and, you know, money may have been moved around to accommodate for certain things, unfortunately, that may have not, you know, an unforeseen circumstance. So I guess going forward, what do you guys think is going to be a big challenge for the Council on Aging? You know, for the next year to two years as we try to deal with this new normal?
Peg or Lisa, do you mind if I ask Margaret to answer?
Go ahead.
Margaret?
Hi there. Great interview. So to respond to that, on the financial side, Berlin is actually trying to take steps to grow the van service for the Council on Aging. So as far as challenges in that respect operationally, we're actually looking to expand that service, add another van driver and maybe create more of a regular van schedule. So you might have seen a picture of the brand new van Berlin has. It really has not been driven yet, so it's really that new. And so I think a challenge or an opportunity for the Council on Aging Director will be to work with the Council on Aging to actually build that van program for seniors. And that ties to budget. There is actually a request to build the budget a little bit to accommodate that program. I think there really hasn't been much work since the position was established a few years ago to really search for outside grants. There's an annual formula grant that's applied for. But I think another opportunity or challenge, however you want to look, look at it, is the fact that there is grant funding out there. And that might open some doors for programs in town too. So I hope that helps to answer your questions a little bit. You know, of course, just learning who your Council on Aging is and working with them. It's a group, you know, a small group of people who are vested in the interests of seniors, getting to know them and working, of course, with your peers in the town and, and of course, all the seniors in town. So those will be the normal, the normal challenges. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
That help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else?
That was the only question I had. I was watching the, I was watching your meeting earlier. So I was just curious just to see, but that was the one question that kept popping up.
Okay, yep. We're, we're certainly happy that we have Margaret, who's done a lot of work with Finance Committee and her, her finance team also. So, well, I think that that would conclude our interview with you this evening. Ladies, would you like to deliberate at this point? Lisa, Peg?
There were a couple key points, Victoria, and I love the hey you works. They kind of struck with me. I'm sure you've met Bob Blair, who works on Council on Aging, and I was part of a call tree that he had where we did just that, we checked in on the seniors. And it, for me, it went over extremely well. People were happy that someone took the time even to make a 30-second call to say, hey, how you doing? Do you need anything? And, you know, through the course of the conversation, I found out that I was related to somebody in town and that somebody walks by my house every day to go hiking where I continually get lost. You know, so I don't go hiking anymore. So it's just that type of reach out that you kind of kept reinforcing is that, you don't want to lose that because truly, once that generation is gone, it's gone with that. So, you know, just wanted to thank you on your, on your passion for that.
Yeah.
And I appreciated, you know, your wanting to work as a team with the Council on Aging and with the seniors. And you're looking for the senior feedback, which is very important because even if you weren't looking for it, I think they might be.
Yeah, Berlin's not a quiet town. You'll find out.
Lisa, did you have anything to add?
Um, just no, I, I, I think you're sort of confident in where you want to go with this and why you want to do it. And I think that, that would be a very positive thing going into this position.
So ladies, do I hear a motion?
Motion to hire Victoria pending all pre-employment.
Stuff.
Stuff.
Well, I hear a second.
Yes, you do.
Okay, then we'll take a vote. Keef, I.
Waisaki, I.
Stone, I.
Congratulations, Victoria.
Thank you.
I already have one project all lined up for you, so once you get settled in, I'll be coming to find you.
Thank you.
So Margaret, do you want to talk to Victoria about the pre-employment things or?
Victoria, can I, can I give you a call tomorrow? And we can, we can talk about the pre-employment requirements and the path forward here. And sometimes the board works quickly and congratulations on being offered this position. So I will look forward to talking with you tomorrow and we can start working on pre-employment things.
Thank you very much.
Then don't panic. There's a lot of resources out there for you. You have a lot of peers in your communities. You have a lot of support at the state level, so don't panic.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you, Victoria. We'll talk.
Thank you, Victoria.
Yes, take care, everybody.
All right. Well, that was a very good interview. I think we're going to move on to the Town Administrator Report. Are you muted, Margaret?
I just unmuted myself.
All right.
I'm practicing restraint here, so. All right, on my report this week, I'm going to get into a little bit of, of COVID-related reopening stuff. But first, you just interviewed, hopefully, our new Council on Aging Director. And we'll get going with her really quickly on pre-employment measures. And we still have an 1870 Town Hall Manager who has been waiting very patiently through, through all of this, through all of this health crisis. She still hasn't started and doesn't have an official starting date yet, but I have invited her to attend my monthly meeting next week with department heads because we are going to be talking about reopening. And so that's going to be directly relevant to the 1870 Town Hall. So I'd like to introduce her to our department heads and give her a chance to listen in on reopening plans. Today was the deadline for departments to submit their essential, their essential budget expenditure requests. I think that we have received nearly all of them. It's now, it's now time for June and I to work to kind of develop the budget spreadsheet, go over the requests, make sure they actually do qualify as essential spending requests for the month of July. And we're going to prepare to have this to the board for your approval of the July expenditure plan on July 15th. So we can get it into, to DLS. This might be, you know, depending on where we go with our town meeting, if it turns out that we're able to have town meeting before June 30th, this will be an exercise that we find didn't have to happen, but we can't be too certain at this point. We don't want to be without the ability to spend money on July 1st. Now, on to COVID-19-related expenditures. I've said in my report for the past few weeks that the, that the accountant that June is tracking all COVID-19-related expenses and she has a file going. We are active now on FEMA's, FEMA's portal because we are going to be submitting for 75% reimbursement of qualified costs. And we also have the ability to tap CARES Act funding through the state's coronavirus relief fund. Berlin, the entire state, $2.7 billion in monies that municipalities can avail themselves of for COVID-related expenditures. We found out recently from DLS that these, these monies can be used to supplement the FEMA reimbursements we're going to get. So FEMA reimburses at 75%, these monies could be used to reimburse the additional 25% for COVID-related expenses. So I think it is in our best interest to put in an application for this. Berlin's amount that it has been allocated is $283,900. It is highly doubtful that we would spend all of the money that's been allocated to Berlin because we're only looking at 25% of eligible costs. So what we need, and I'm going to ask, I'm sorry, this isn't an agenda item, these things are flying at us very quickly. I will ask though, for the board to take a vote under my report tonight to allow the chair to sign the certification that we will be applying for coronavirus relief funds. So if the board is comfortable with doing that, I would request a vote to have Chris sign. This does need to be submitted by the end of this week.
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Keef, I.
Waisaki, I.
Stone, I.
Thank you very much. We are preparing for the Thursday night's pre-town meeting and FY21 Budget Forum. That's scheduled to be a virtual meeting at 7:00 PM. There's information on our website. And I know Mary's pushed information out on social media. Mary also had a very good idea about starting to put small groups of articles up on our website and out on Facebook, along with the summaries for those articles, just to kind of get the word out there of what articles folks should expect to see for this town meeting and what the reasons for those articles are. So we're preparing for that. I'm going to be meeting with the Administrative Finance Team either tomorrow or Wednesday. I know Finance Committee is meeting on Wednesday night and hopefully to discuss a strategy on, on their behalf as far as making a statement at the, at the forum. I would ask the board to consider whether you all want to make statements or say something about the budget preparation process, the town meeting process, just to be prepared to speak to that at the start of the forum. Library Septic, the Board of Health has scheduled its hearing for the Library Septic on, for June 16th. There was a little glitch in the initial date of the publication of the legal notice, but it's going to be published this Friday in time for that hearing to happen. Recreational Marijuana, C3's virtual community outreach meeting is scheduled for June 16th. And tomorrow is the date for the technology testing. Mary and Brittany will both be attending their technology testing tomorrow and that's going to be virtual at 11:00 AM. And I have put together a checklist for Mary and Brittany to make sure that C3 is actually meeting all the requirements of their, of the technology for that meeting. As I mentioned earlier, Phase 2 town reopening, reentry plans are being developed. We talked with Dave about the, the equipment that's being installed, the retrofits that are being done. Next steps over this next week, I plan to, to be putting together guidelines for employees that are returning from, from work from home. for employees that are returning from, from work from home, adjusting schedules so that they go a bit back to normal. I'm looking at the possibilities of employees returning to work from their work from home status about June 15th. The Town Hall, as far as I can see now, the Town Hall would still be closed. We would allow that week for employees who are returning to get settled into their new, their new quarters, get used to the life that we're all living with masks every single day and knowing how to and when to use masks and interact with others. And then possibly reopen. And again, this came from Mary and I appreciate this. This was from the Town of Air, that they're doing a soft reopening, starting with appointments only. So people can schedule appointments. It'll help us manage the foot traffic in the building and allow us to kind of gradually get back to normal. So at your next meeting, next Monday, I'll probably be presenting a draft, a draft outline of the plan, the reopening plan for the building. Last week, Chris and I, Tim Wheeler and Peter Hoffman, met with CMR representatives from CMR PC and a representative from Mass Development to have an initial discussion about underutilized municipal buildings and reuse potential for those buildings. Primarily, we were discussing the old fire station and the old rescue squad building to see what the potential might be. And we ended that meeting with a plan to, to begin with looking through deeds and doing title searches and some other similar tasks to be performed in order to continue the discussion. The one thing we don't want, I don't think anyone really wants, is for buildings to sit idle. The town is paying for insurance, for utilities, for water and things at those buildings, and the buildings are not being optimally used. So we're going to, we'll continue that discussion. It's going to be a slow process, but I think we want what's best for the, the buildings and what's best for the town. And then finally, maybe it's not final. Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, the MVP Program. Chiefs Galvin and Clark and Dave Smith and I did a video message last week that explained Berlin's interest in becoming designated as an MVP community. I included snippets from all the letter of supports that were submitted by our local boards and committees. And I think the video overall came out well and it's going to be used as an introduction to our stakeholders workshops that'll be held starting June 18th from 3:15 to 5:30. And then there'll be two more on June 24th and 25th from 3:30 to 5:30. After that, a report will be drafted and, and will be presented for public comments from the community. And the final thing I want to, by the way, today was a property tax deadline. We received one very large property tax payment that we were all in a bit of stress over, but it came today. And so that, that helps us with our, with our actual tax collections. And over the course of this week, we're going to be, we're going to be reviewing the actual tax collections to make sure that we're on track. And the final thing I have to say is just another reminder, I'm kind of doing this every meeting, that the annual town election is on June 29th from 12 noon to 4:00 PM. The Town Clerk encourages folks to vote absentee or early by mail. The absentee ballots are currently available and folks can contact the Town Clerk's Office. Applications are also available online. Or again, contact the Town Clerk's Office for information on how to apply. And I think that's it from the report for tonight.
Okay, any questions for Margaret or Lisa or Peg? Peg, watch your hand up.
Hey. So Margaret, Margaret, Margaret. In your opportunities, projects and initiatives paragraph, you talk about how the Highway Barn Architect has confirmed that his built roof can support roof mount solar. So the obvious question is, so what do we do next?
How do we get this done? I think there are a number of options. I think that we would be eligible for additional grant funding from Green Communities, provided we can finish this Berlin Elementary School lighting retrofit. Something, the DOE R's walkthrough has been held up because of the COVID-19 issue. And I think that we have to submit a final grant report. But once we tidy all that up, we could probably approach DOE R to see if there's opportunity there. We also have the potential opportunity for community compact funding to do some engineering work to actually design a solar system. That grant opportunity is opening up now. So we might be able to take a look at that. And there might be other options. I just haven't had a chance at the, to, to look at how we proceed. And it was good news getting, getting, getting that from the architect, but we'll have to put a plan in place for it, Peg.
Is there anything that we need to do by the end of this fiscal year for that? Or any regulations, any things that we need to look at for wattage that we need to be concerned about?
I think that we, we are going to actually have to have, I don't, I don't believe, I haven't, I haven't looked into this, but I don't believe that the engineering was actually done on putting the solar on. I'm guessing that the solar was, was, the solar portion of the project was dropped before the engineering actually was able to happen. So I think that's going to be our first step to find out what the roof can accommodate and how much power the needs, the building is going to need. So that's something that we might be able to do as a green initiative from the Community Compact Program. So I'll look into that. That would be a good first step.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Okay, Lisa, you have any questions?
No.
All right. We'll move on to old business then. We were going to talk about annual town meeting and possibly meet with, I think it was Jim Giriffi. Is Jim online by any chance?
Yeah, I, we got an email late today that he did have a conflict tonight, but was going to try to attend. I don't think, Mary, I don't see him. I don't know if you see him in the, in attendees. So looks like he's, looks like he's not here. But Paul McAlk is here, as is Barry, the Town Moderator. I would like to, after the board spoke last week, Barry circulated a planning guide for town meeting during a pandemic put out by the Mass Moderators Association. It is an excellent document that goes over all kinds of logistics for setting up town meeting. And while I can't answer what the final verdict is going to be, I, I think that this document is, is put together extremely well and much better in fact than the Mass Boards of Health Association documents. So this lays out all kinds of options and to conduct town meeting in the safest way possible.
And I believe you sent an email out about a webinar that might also be helpful.
I did. That was a, that is a webinar specifically for boards, members of the Board of Selectmen, members of the Finance Committee and town managers. So that was something that the invite is going to be going to those parties. It's probably going to address things similar to what's in the Mass Moderators Association Guide and the other things that we've received, but it'll hopefully reinforce the safety protocols.
Okay.
I should let you know too, that after last week's meeting, I contacted Central Mass Mosquito Control and I asked about the possibility of them spraying prior to town meeting. They are absolutely willing to do that a couple of times and could actually do it as late as Friday. The Friday immediately prior to town meeting, if the town decided to go with an outdoor venue.
And, and our date is on a Monday?
Date's on a Monday.
Yeah. Right. Was there any other, any other information that we could share amongst all of us? Sorry, I think I'm going to sneeze. Sorry. Don't worry, just allergies. I don't know whether any of the other panelists had any other information. Perhaps Barry, you've given us the, the Town Moderator's Guide. Is there anything else that you have, have learned since last week?
As I said last week, those, that Moderator's Guide doesn't necessarily give you the answers, but it does give you the questions.
And we have to figure out, we have to figure out the answers, right?
The other thing that I will say is that in looking at some of the things, and I mean, gosh sakes, we've got places that are doing drive-in, a drive-in setup and everything else. But then I really, really wonder how you deal with voting in those situations, because the more that you completely diffuse where everybody is, you can't use voice votes anymore. If you can't use voice votes, this is going to be a very long meeting, whereas I'd hope for it to be a short meeting. And I'm not at all sure how, you know, if we go outdoors, I really would rather be in chairs and seats than so forth, so that we still can have the people gathered in a way that we would be able to function a bit more normally. If we really have to run around to get votes somehow, it's going to be awful. If, if, if we had electronic voting and all that, that would be lovely, but we don't have it. And it's, while it's something I just love to have personally, it's still very expensive from my point of view. And I think most people in Berlin would say, hey, what do we need that for? But this is a situation where if you could use it, it might be really great because then you could use that method. We don't have that available now. So I, I don't know. We'll just have to see as we decide what to do. We'll have to come up with ways to make things work.
Yeah. Paul, do you have anything that you've learned since last week?
Really nothing that changes our conversation from last week.
Yeah.
Pretty much the same. We're waiting for new openings slash protocols from the State House. And there hasn't been anything in the last week. Nothing significant that affects our town meeting consideration.
Okay. And do you think that, is it Jim Giriffi?
Jim Giriffi. I have emailed him asking him to do whatever he can to be available for next Monday night. A week's notice and hopefully, because he was participating in another Zoom meeting with one of his other member towns tonight, which.
All right, well, let us know.
Will do, absolutely.
Okay. And Chief Galvin or Chief Clark?
Not a lot. I did notice that Salford just posted on the 13th on that Saturday, they're going to have their town meeting outdoors. It might be a great thing to go and observe to see how it functions, if that is something that we are, are looking at. You know, it's a one o'clock in the afternoon versus an evening, but it is, it is going to be an outdoor setup. So there was some interesting things I saw in the article about it, where they have some special microphones that allow people to speak from a greater distance away from them. So to see what they do and how it works may be very helpful for us. Just the other discussions that Chief Clark and I have, have had, and one thing that we both have said is that, you know, when you make a decision, in what direction you want to go and how you're going to hold this meeting, we'll make it happen. You know, we've already repubbed some resources. We've gotten some things in place, should you choose to go outdoors, indoors, whatever it may be. So just, just, you know, realize that we're here, we're going to support you and we'll, we'll find a way to make it happen.
Well, I, I appreciate that assistance. Chief Clark, did you have anything to add?
Chief, you're on mute. No, can't hear you, chief.
How's that? Thank you.
There you go.
The chief and I just spoke today about that. And it's a, we're ready to go. Just make your decision at the strategic level. Leave the tactical level stuff to us to get done for you. If we have any questions, we'll bring it all to you, see what, how you want. This tweaked or that tweaked. And we're already ready to go. We got six of the lighting plants lined up if you're on the night that you pick to do it. So there would be plenty of light. They also provide electricity by running cords to run power supplies for public address systems and things like that. So the plan's already kind of like formulated. You guys let us know what you need done and like the chief said, we'll get it done.
All right. Thanks.
You guys are a great assist to us. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. So I believe we will probably be talking about this again next week.
Probably.
We get it right.
I would like to say this. I'd like to see a decision next week, so we have two weeks to prepare. I'm really not happy with making the decision on the 15th and having only one week to, to really get the things in order. Because part of the thing is to prepare the people for what to expect when they get there. And we've got to figure out all the things that we need to do to, in order to make that happen.
Okay. I, I agree. I think we probably should be, hopefully trying to make a decision by next week. Margaret, did you have something else to add?
I was just going to completely agree with Barry. I think next week, I think next week should be the decision.
Okay. All right. Then I think we are going to move on to the next agenda item.
Actually, I have just one quick question.
Sure.
Um, so if we purchased like mics that did that or even potentially looked into interactive voting, could that be considered a COVID-related response? Is that something that, that we could maybe do under the auspices of, of preparing for that town meeting?
Margaret, through the chair, we would definitely apply for reimbursement for those costs.
Okay, so that is something that we could potentially consider. All right.
Yes, as long as they're directly COVID-related.
Okay. Any other questions, Peg?
No, I mean, my concern about having it inside, you're never going to know how many people are going to show up. And even if the gym had a, say a 200 seating capacity, you couldn't put 200 people in there because if folks show up late, then they've got to be able to come into the room. And if they're in another room and they've got to come in. So there's all those logistical fun things that we need to sit down and check off and see what should be easier.
So we, can we potentially agree that if this does go forward, that we would do it outside? Is that something we could agree to tonight, just so that people have a heads up on that?
Is that something that you want to discuss further or?
I think, I think if we're going to have it, it needs to be outside.
And then with a rain date or with a Plan B if it rains?
Rain date.
Let me ask, how does a rain date affect the logistics that Chief Clark and Chief Galvin have put their fingers on?
By, by that you mean?
If we have, if we schedule it for X day and it ends up being Y day, a week later, four days later, what impact does that have on lighting, sound systems, et cetera? Is that something that we can morph into with relatively, relative ease?
I would think that's something we could adapt to.
That question right now.
Yeah, I mean, there's no definite, but I think it's something that we, we could adapt to with the context that we have and the resources that are out there.
Okay.
Okay. Peg, did you have anything to add about outdoor?
No, I'm good, as long as, you know, we all agree that everything should, you know, be okay. I'm going to make the motion to move the meeting outdoors the week of.
Well, I don't think we have to decide right now whether it's going to go forward. I just think we need to decide it's, it's going to be outside. And then we can decide about the date later.
All right, so can we make the motion to have the town meeting whenever the date is? That we're going to have it outside?
Do you want to do a motion or do you want to wait and do this final decision next week?
Nope. Nope. You know, I, I agree with Lisa. We need to start putting plans in place. So I know that I don't want to go in a building. So I think we need to consider, you know, folks in town and their concerns about going in a building too. folks in town and their concerns about going in a building too, not even like going grocery shopping. So I think we should just make it to go outside.
And can I ask Barry, are you good with that?
He's on mute.
Can someone unmute him?
No, I can mute, I, I unmute myself when I want to talk. I don't really want to talk right now.
Do you?
I think everybody will go, I mean, my, my impression is folks just want to know how to plan. So this would be one step to help them to, to know how to plan, is if we say outside.
And that's kind of what I was going for last week when I, when we were talking, saying if, if we were going to decide in or out, you know, that, that's the part that we needed to make a decision on. So. Out. Okay. I mean, I, I, I agree. Peg, you're good?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so we'll discuss the details next week?
Yep, and decide, you know, whether it's going to go forward on the 22nd or not next week.
From, from the Board of Health standpoint, I personally, I like the idea of indoor, but I would recommend that we do this outdoors. It's just, there are too many unknowns, and outdoor is the safest approach right now.
Well, perhaps, Paul, maybe you could talk with Jim?
Absolutely.
And just see whether he, if he isn't able to make it next week, you maybe just give us some.
Get some words from him, some.
Some words of wisdom.
From him, absolutely.
That would be good.
Yep.
Okay. So I think that's how we're going to move forward at this moment.
Chris, do you need to make it formal? Like a formal vote?
That's up to the board, so.
Formal vote it is. I make a motion to move the meeting outside, whenever the date may be.
Second.
Town meeting.
Was that a second, Lisa?
It was.
Okay. Okay, then we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Rice Haki, I.
Stone, I.
Okay.
Margaret has a question.
So I just want to follow up. I, I know that this is going to require logistical strategy, and I know the chiefs are on the setup. Barry, I'm, I'm more than happy to work with you. You let me know, you know, we can talk about flow and everything like that and setup. And Paul, same, same thing. This is going to require, going to require a team effort to put the logistics in place and start communicating it to the residents.
We're going to, just, just to touch on it, we're going to have to have somebody at the entry of the driveway guiding people, just a step one. And we're going to have to have follow-up individuals guiding people into the appropriate places. So there, there's a few logistics for sure to be dealt with.
Yeah.
I'm going to start talking to Eloise, the town clerk, and, and I think, Margaret, we might put a meeting together with the chiefs in order to really work on this.
Sounds good.
I would also like everybody to give some thought to what is in the warrant that is essential. And while we tried to cut the thing down, I sure would like it if we were, if we, if we find the thing tends to bog down and take it, take a long time to do things, that we only do the things that we absolutely have to, and we maybe skip over some of the stuff. So think about that possibility too. And, and I, that's for everybody, particularly for the selectmen and, and, and Margaret to think about what we might say, hey, look, this could be put off till next year or something if it had to be.
Okay. Will do. Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate your assist, and we'll get this thing put together.
Beginnings of a plan.
Yeah. So we're going to move on to our last old business item, which is to review the annual town meeting motions. And Margaret?
Okay, so first I want to reiterate what I mentioned earlier. Mary had a great idea to put three or four articles out on the town's website and social media each day, along with the.
Hang on, did you have something to tell me, Mary? No?
Hung up a Barry, but I'm bringing him back. Here he is.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so Mary's idea was to put three or four articles out on webs, on our website and social media each day, along with the article summaries, to try to just keep fresh in everyone's mind what is on the warrant and to invite them or encourage them to ask questions ahead of time. I know that we're going to have the pre-town meeting and budget forum this Thursday night. We'll be talking about articles, we'll be going over the summaries for those articles. And then at the board's coffee talk on June 11th, there'll be another opportunity to go through those. But not everyone will be in attendance at, at either of those meetings. So to put these things out on the website and social media, the more information we can get out and encourage people to ask questions ahead of town meeting, hopefully the more streamlined a town meeting will be. Barry, do you agree? We have the info out there?
Margaret and I will be meeting this week to talk more about the Thursday night session. I'm wondering whether the board has any particular concerns you want us to be prepared to address in that Thursday night session.
Lisa or Peg? No?
What would you just say?
Oops. I think I was asking Lisa or Peg if they had anything particular concerns?
I would say, you know, once again, encourage people, if they can ask their questions beforehand, we can even potentially, if there's a question that comes up a lot, maybe we can even post the, the answers to those particular questions in a FAQ or something, a town meeting FAQ on the website or wherever. But the more that we can take care of before we get there, the better.
And before we put these things on the website, Margaret, would it be a good idea to make sure that they're going on the warrant? I mean, I, I mean, as far as Barry's suggestion?
They are on the warrant, so it's going to be, yeah, so I, I might, you know, what I would envision, and Mary nod, if, if, if you agree, like the first four articles that are actually resubmitted to the town for votes, those, those four bylaws, those can go on as a group and with an explanation that they're being resubmitted for votes due to the, the glitch with last year's warrant. So all of these are on the warrant, so we'll take little groups and get them up there with the explanations. I think on Thursday night, there'll probably be a lot of focus on budget. The town is using a number of different funding sources that it doesn't typically use, so there's going to be some money, some free cash used to that contingency budget line. There might be some questions on that. We're going to be using a little bit of money from assessors, from assessors overlay surplus toward utility appraisals, that's not typically used. We're going to be using a, we're going to be taking a programmatic approach to funding some recurring public safety costs, specifically staffing costs. So that might need a little explanation. So I think there might be, you know, there might be a little heavier focus on, on budget items, but we'll be sure to go through all of the, all of the articles.
Okay. Did you want to talk anymore about the motions or?
I just wanted to introduce these to you. I've sent a copy to Barry. These are very much in draft form. There are a lot of blanks in the budget motions still, and a lot, a big reason for that is because the vote the school committee took two weeks ago on reducing their budget. So we do, we are going to have to make some revisions to the revenue projections and to the budget lines specifically, or of the budget lines. The Toronto Operating Assessment, Berlin Memorial Operating Assessment, and Berlin Memorial's Capital Assessment, those are all going to be changed. So we do have some revisions we need to work through. The administrative finance team and I, again, will be meeting either tomorrow or Wednesday, and then the finance committee will, will brief the finance committee on what our recommendations would be for revenue adjustments. So I just wanted to introduce these to the board, let you see what the draft is looking like at this point.
Okay. Any questions?
I have given a, a little thought to the idea of having those four bylaws from last year, putting up a, doing a quick straw poll at the beginning and asking if, if there's any opposition to taking them up together as one unit.
Thank you, Barry. Town council actually presented that as a legitimate option, so that would be, that would be great.
I think it, maybe if we have, if we can bring that up at the Thursday meeting, we might get an idea about what some of the public feel about that. But if people feel that, well, these things have already been decided, then we could perhaps take one vote for all four and save a lot of time there.
Yeah. That's good. Get some, try and get some feedback Thursday night, that would be good. Okay, any other questions? Comments? All right. Well, seeing as the agenda doesn't have any new business on it tonight, we're moving to board questions and comments. Anybody have any board questions and comments?
I just had the, I know that I spoke with Bob Blair, and he really hasn't gotten a lot of input yet for the drawing on the Council on Aging Ban, which is a, a little sad. Was hoping to get more folks involved in the town. I guess only two packets have been picked up, whether they'll be returned or not. I know the deadline is, what's today, Monday, Wednesday? So again, anybody watching this, or anybody knows who's a graphic artist person, if there's something that we can do with a Plan B, if people don't participate, that's greatly, greatly appreciated.
Okay. Lisa, anything?
No.
Okay, then we have no need for an executive session, so I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and Keith, I.
Rice Haki, I.
Stone, I.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody.